Good evening, everyone. I call to order the February 27th Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton? President.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Here. Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Maraski?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your request for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any questions that you might have. I'll share briefly the three-month board priorities that are listed here on the agenda. The first is progress monitoring for the mid-year superintendent evaluation. The second is strategic planning. The third is updating our board bylaws. Fourth is transportation. And the fifth is superintendent and board relations. These five priorities came from our January retreat, our January work session. And for the last little over a year as a board, we've said in advance over a given three-month period, what is the most important work that we can be doing to make a difference for children and families and staff in the district? So we're excited about these five. If you're interested in a little bit more detail about what we mean by each of these and where we hope to be by May 1st, I direct your attention to the third page of the agenda where you can see more concretely where we hope to be in May. We have another meeting next week on Monday, and I'm hoping that we can provide an update to ourselves and to the public on how we're doing against these five. We've done this in the past, been about a month since we wrote these, and I think it's healthy that we're holding ourselves accountable to the public and to each other to make sure we deliver. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item C, which is our superintendent's update. Superintendent Wright, do you have an update this evening?
Yes, thank you, Board President. Actually, we have two areas here. The first is, well, the second is the winter benchmark summary. But before doing that, we know that this is now February. January was Board Member Recognition Month, and so during that month, we really wanted to make sure that we were honoring our board and just celebrating the work that you do as much as possible. So every day is a day for appreciation. This week happens to be Public Education Week, so also in honor of Board Recognition Month and Public Education Week, we have just a little gift for each of you. The team is coming very, very quickly to share those, but I do want you to pull them out once you get them. So go ahead, and they're coming all down. And this is for the board, for myself, and for the treasurer. And so if you'll look in your bag really quickly, everybody's bag is the same, just so that you know once it starts coming out, all of yours is the same.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and pull those out if we can. I will. And so we have, you have two things that are in your bag. One is, and Dr. Moffett, may I hold yours for a minute? Okay, so we talked about last month really what we're doing around recruitment, and we do believe that it's important that everyone is a recruiter for Cincinnati Public Schools. We know we're having an event that launches our recruitment this weekend, and we're really calling that the CPS-Cincy Experience because it's not just about individuals buying into Cincinnati Public Schools, but it is about them buying into Cincinnati as a community. So on the front, our theme is "Your Purpose, Our Legacy: We Are CPS." And on the back, it says "Ask Me About Career Opportunities." So we have these for the board. We have about 150 of them that are out with our team. So that was yours, Dr. Moffett. And we can decide when we wear these for the first time to one of our board meetings, but each of you has a uniform shirt as well to show our unity as one team, one board, one band, one sound. So thank you so much for what you do every day, not just for me, but for all of the children of Cincinnati Public Schools. Let's give our board a round of applause. And now we'll move into our winter benchmark updates. So this one is the first one that we are sharing, and this is the cursory information, I think that is the best way for me to say that. For the most part, what you'll see is the comparison from winter benchmark last year to the winter benchmark now. And that's relevant because when we do a deeper dive on the data during Cal, we will look at three data points during that time, and that will be winter last year, fall this year, and winter this year, so that we're making the comparison not just from last year to this year, but also from the beginning of the school year to now. One of the reasons that we did believe starting here is also relevant is because the winter benchmark data for our district for last year was most closely aligned to where we saw our scoring on OST. And so that's really the, when we're talking about the conversation, that's the conversation that we're having. So the testing information, the benchmark window began December 5th, and it ended January 31st. For reading, math, growth, or I-Ready assessments administered to students that were grades K through 10, and we say either/or, because for our kindergarten through 5th grade students, they take I-Ready, many of them that are in the, we have a pilot that takes I-Ready, and then the rest take math. For math, all of our students K through 5th grade take I-Ready because I-Ready is also the curriculum that we use. So they take the I-Ready assessment, and for all other grade levels, they take math. And then for science, it's math growth assessments as well, and those are for our students' grades 4 through 8. So the analysis that's provided in the information that you have, as you look through the data, you will see, you will see a few things. One of the things that you will notice is you have data for all districts, that all district information includes all grade levels, not just tested grade levels. So when we go deeper into the data, as we have the conversation during Cal, Essay Cal, we will make certain that we also discuss just the tested areas as well as all of the areas across the board. The other thing that you have is the grade level that's tested, the percent of overall of the school that was tested. And if you recall, one of the areas that we referenced when we looked at our data from the winter earlier, we saw that we didn't, in some of the areas, we didn't have as many of our students that actually tested, and we wanted to make sure that we increased the testable populate, the testing population. And then we look at the percent that actually met the proficiency expectation, and then that's for fall, for winter, for fall, and for the winter for this year. Overall percentages of students that are projected to be proficient on the OST based on this data, so it gives us a pretty good snapshot. So this slide is pretty small. Oh, it's larger up there, but you have this in your information that was provided for you, and this gives the breakdown of where we are right now currently for reading overall for the district. So as we look at the individual areas, we'll start with 3rd grade. We see for our kindergarten, 1st, and 2nd grade students, in terms of their overall growth, their growth is dependent upon, of course, where they started, but also where they perform on the math assessment. Those areas are not tested areas on the Ohio State Test, so we'll start with 3rd grade. And as you look at the data for 3rd grade, we see from the beginning of the chart under growth, percent of students that met or exceeded normal growth. And then we go into the breakdown by proficiency area or by performance area. That starts with limited, which would be equivalent to a 1, and all the way to advanced, which would be equivalent to a 5. And then the last column, the number of students that met the equivalency number as well as the percent of students. One of the things I do want to call our attention to for our 3rd grade students, because of 3rd grade reading law, which we talked about during our last Essay Cal meeting, we have 44, at this point, at this time, 44% of our students that have already made the, met the criteria to be promoted, and there are several other opportunities for that to happen as well, so did want to call that out for us. And I think what we're seeing overall, as you begin to study the data, I think that we're able to see, at least in our 3rd through 5th grade areas, we're beginning to see some increase, if you will, in terms of overall performance when we think about from the beginning of the school year. The other thing that's important is as we begin to look at the overall data, when we look at the math data as well, we're also able to see where we're seeing some increases there as well. So want to make sure that we're calling attention to that. For our math levels, same kind of information, starting with our 3rd grade population. If we look at where we met or exceeded growth for our initial benchmark, and then where we are right now in terms of overall performance. So about 42% of our students are showing performance improvement, are showing overall proficiency in our district numbers. And that number as compared to this time last year, which it will, we'll dig into more when we do this presentation during Cal, but that number this time last year was 15%. So it's important for us to be able to make the comparison as we go through the data. And so the slides that you receive do show the winter school year assessment and the winter for last year and winter for this year. And then we have the same for science. For science, we test 5th and our 8th grade populations for science, and looking at where we are right now in the science data, we see that our students are about 39% proficient, showing proficiency for 5th grade and 27% for our 7th grade, for our 8th grade population. Now, this is, this is the, these are the slides that allow us to look at the comparison from last school year to this school year. So when we think about, the columns that we're looking at would be overall district summary. So if we're looking at 3rd grade for last year, we were at 33.03%, and this year, that's at 37.3%. So that means from winter to winter, we're beginning to see that we are having some improvement in reading. And then 4th grade, we see an increase as well. 5th grade, we see an increase. 6th grade, an increase. 7th, an increase. 8th grade, we see a bit of a decline. And then we talk about what we see for Algebra I as well. And for math and for Algebra I, we see a decline for Algebra I. We do want to call out here, and I shared the individual reports with you, but this does not include the data from Walnut for all of the students that attended as well. So we have other slides that we would share that would include Walnut, but just so that we get a more clear picture across the district, this one does not include Walnut. And then for 10th grade, where we are with reading. And then we look at our math also, so starting with where we were. We see the greatest improvements right now, and I did have the team go back and check this data because it seemed to be such an increase from where we were last winter, but they did go back and check the data before we pulled the data out, and we see the greatest increases in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade in math, which is indicative of what we're seeing in the classrooms in terms of improvements with the resources that are being used, but we do want to see that consistently across the board. And then for 6th, which we also thought was interesting, for 6th grade, we saw a bit of a, for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, we saw a bit of a decline across the board, and that just gives us more questions that we need to answer. And for Algebra I, I called out earlier that this data does not include Walnut, but it is relevant that we have some real concerns in the area of Algebra I, which, you know, we've shared from the very beginning. So that's where we're stopped. Rob, if you'll go back to the last slide, just in case we have any questions from any of our board members. So I'll stop here, Board President, see if there are any questions.
Thank you very much for the report, Superintendent. Board members, do we have questions or comments? Mr. Maraski?
Thank you, President Lindy. Thanks for the report, and for whatever it's worth, I just kind of want to highlight, you know, the importance of taking Walnut out of the data so it doesn't skew it too much, and I think it takes courage to look at numbers like this with Walnut specifically removed, and it's super helpful for me. And one thing I'd like to focus on is the dramatic jump. I'm glad you asked people to go check that. So I think I have an idea, but if for nothing else in the public certification, what do we attribute the 15% last time this year to 42.5% proficiency this year, and then in those early grades, 3, 4, and 5? What do you attribute that to?
Well, honestly, I think right now, we have done a real reset in our elementary schools with our curriculum. And I believe that when we look at, from week to week, we monitor the uses of, usage of the curriculum. There is a three-pronged approach to the curriculum, so you have the core curriculum that teachers are doing, then you have the small groups that happen as well, and the students are doing a technology piece called MyPath. So we started in, probably in October, really beginning to monitor what that data is looking like, week to week to week. We've done additional professional development for teens. We had a lot of days that were available from time that we had not used the professional development time. And so, you know, as a teacher, a lot of the feedback that we get is that we would like to have that one-on-one individual contact, and so we organize the time with our provider to do one-on-one teacher support. So they go into the classroom, they do an observation with the teacher, do a co-planned lesson with the teacher, and they give feedback from there. And so we believe that we're beginning to see the beginnings of, you know, the improvements in those areas.
Awesome, thank you. And it reminds me of something my colleague E. Bolton used to say, when I first got on the board, that curriculum was the hidden weapon for equity, when we really started looking at our curricula, various curricula to make it more board-adapted and improved. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maraski. Other board members have, Superintendent, please.
The other thing that I'll also add here that you will see, which also caused me to ask, ask some of the questions from the dataset from last year, but what you will see when we go, when we do our deeper dive data, where we look at the fall assessment as well, you will notice that the students in 3rd grade, they started at 38%, right? So if you look at where their fall scores were in 3rd grade, and then in 4th grade, it was 36%, in 5th grade, it was 22%. So they also started, based on the fall information, higher than they were in the winter for last year, and that's also relevant to the data conversation.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Thank you. Almost forgot about my mic. Thank you, Superintendent Wright. I have a couple of questions. So as I'm looking at the data points, and as, as we can see, the reading scores obviously are a little lower. The math, they're doing well there. My question would be, moving forward for the grades from kindergarten all the way up to 12th, what is the plan in terms of with our reading specialists to help our children, especially in the area of reading? And then also, when you separated this information, how are English language learner students doing and our students on IEPs?
So to answer the first part of your question, I think there are a few things that we want to dig into because you asked a question relevant to reading specialists, and I know some of that is in recommendation, is aligned with recommendations that we're currently making. I think the first thing is, it's important for us to recognize that there is an instructional design model that is used in classrooms when it's used consistently across the board. It allows teachers to do small group instruction with students. And so when we think about an instructional design that aligns for a whole group instruction, if you have a data source or a way to receive data that's truly on alignment with where student skills deficits are, it allows the work that's been happening with students to be more impactful. So the first would be tier-one instruction and what we're doing across the board in tier-one. So students start with an assessment. From that assessment, you then identify where their deficits are. Tier-one instruction addresses those standards-based challenges or where they're, where they're looking to go in terms of OST, but then you have to focus on skills, on skills-based challenges. So the second defense for skills-based challenge is a small group instruction with the teacher in the classroom. The third level of defense or support for students in terms of the need for tier-two instruction is what they're doing on MyPath. So essentially, that's saying that as they're using that technology component, we want to make sure that technology does not replace, but technology should support and should augment. And so that would be the third thing that's happening in that area. And then the fourth is every other individual that's in the school building, because as we think about some of the deficits or challenges that our students have, it is possible for us to work with and train our intervention specialists that are in buildings, to train our paraprofessionals that are in buildings, to also do some of that work with the students as well, so that it's both specific because the assessment allows it to be both diagnostic and prescriptive. So that would be the response in terms of the first question. In terms of the breakout for, for our ELL students and our students with IEPs, this data is composite, so we have not broken down the dataset that I actually shared by any of our ethnicities or by any of our special populations. When we review the data at the next Cal meeting, we will break it down in those areas, but thinking about the depth of that information, trying to do it all tonight, from what I've gathered in other presentations that we've done, it's best that we do, one, to start with, give it a baseline, give it a foundation, and then do the other set of data.
Thank you. I would be interested in seeing that, so once we get to that other meeting. That would be great, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Any other questions? I was, got a message from Rob that we have a full house tonight in our online holding room. We have about 20 people who are interested in speaking and hearing of the public this evening. So if people do have comments or questions, please bring them. We also have a longer hearing of public than normal. Mr. Craig?
So, you know, again, thank you for providing information. I think one of the things that's important to also note, and I think to, Mike brought up a little bit, but also the completion in percentages for each of the grades increased, and I think that's a good sign as well, because that shows that we're getting the students through the process, we're getting students tested, we're able to get more information about where our students are. I thought maybe you could speak a little bit also to, and I know, again, some of the differences between 6th, 7th, 8th, maybe also factoring in where 6th, 7th, and 8th walked in with, because of just a few years ago, those students were the ones who were most affected by our absence from the classroom and COVID. And so is there, are we also seeing, some of this has to do with the fact that some of these students have just been in the classroom more at the younger grades? And so that some of the efforts that we're doing with curriculum and other stuff are able to be able, are more in place and able to take form?
So I think, thank you for the question. So I think when we look at 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, it is really going to be important that we also look at where the students started. So I think having the additional component of the fall data will really be advantageous to that conversation, because I think what we will see is that we're not as far away as we think from where we started in the fall, even though it appears to be farther away than we were in the winter last year. So for example, 6th grade math was at 30% this time last year. Right now, it's at 27%, but in the fall, it was at 23.5. So there's actually been an increase from fall to winter, but not an increase from winter to winter. And that's relevant as well because it's not the same population of students. So if we start talking about cohort groups, you know, our 5th grade students in, our students that were in 6th grade last year were at 30%, and then those students who would now be 7th grade students, and this is where the concerns come in, those students that would now be 7th grade students for the fall, for the, for the, for the winter are at 15%. That's the concern, because that means that that cohort group moving from 5th grade to 7th grade, there was a challenge, and so it really will cause us to do a few things. One, all of the data is indicating to me that we might need to take a, take another look at curriculum. One, alignment of when we're doing our standards and what those standards are looking at. Two, and number three, pacing. And so those would be things that really, visiting classrooms, doing observations, and getting feedback from teachers, I think that we'll definitely, we'll be able to see some improvements in those areas.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any other last comments or questions before we keep going? Okay, so we'll move on to item D, which is Hearing of the Public. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. This is for our online visitors. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any question you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each person will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful to all listeners. Thank you. We typically don't respond in the meeting to Hearing of the Public, sometimes because of time, sometimes because there's some follow-up work that needs to happen prior to a response, but we do ask for people's contact information so that we can provide a response. If you haven't received one and asked for one, please contact the board office or me directly. I'm going to bring in one other piece this evening, which all board members may know, some board members may know, but I want to make sure I raise it for the folks here as well. There is a part of our board bylaws, this is Policy 0169, that says the presiding officer shall have the discretion to limit the total amount of time given to a single issue in the Hearing of the Public. So I'm not entirely sure if this is 25 different topics or 25 of the same topic. I think the way I'd like to handle this this evening is to work as a group, and if it does turn out that there are many, many, many speakers on the same topic, if anybody would like to make a motion that we move on in alignment with our bylaws, I'm happy to entertain that motion, and we'll just see if that's what a majority want to do. And it could be that either we have 25 totally individual topics, or that the majority would like to hear from everyone, and we'll follow whatever the majority would like to do. So we're going to start with our folks in person. We have five of these. I'm going to read all of them so that people can know when they're next. We're going to start with Eddie Hawkins, and I'm sorry I can't read the first name, but it's last name Wilson, I think. Next will be Abria Drummonds, followed by Sharika Buckner, followed by Brad Smith, followed by Julie Sellers. So if we can have Mr. Hawkins and last name Wilson come down, we'll have those folks start us off. Thank you.
Time starts now. First, wanted to say, representing the Alumni, Cincinnati Public School Alumni Association, I went to Woodward, he went to Aiken High School. And first, we wanted to ask the superintendent for an opportunity to meet with her and her staff. We've noticed we have a lot of new people working in the district, and we don't, we're not really familiar with their, we're not, hear me now? We would like to meet the superintendent and her new staff because we're not all familiar with their roles. So we kind of want to know exactly what they do and what their roles are within the district. Second, we would like to also ask, has there been any discussion around possibly increasing the budget of athletics? I know athletics is not always at the forefront of conversations, however, athletics do assist with keeping young people in school and giving them something to do. Currently, our athletic high school programs have been working with the same budget for the last 10 years, which is $30,000. It's kind of distasteful. I think some of the things we see with our 7th and 8th grade is lack of having opportunities to participate in athletics, so that may be why you see sort of a dip. A lot of athletic programs utilize grade sheets to keep young people engaged and keep them coming to school. Second, being a graduate of Woodward High School, I noticed that Woodward High School is a career tech school. Have there been any discussions surrounding the admissions process? From my understanding, we were looking to compete with a Butler Tech or a Scarlet Oaks, and those programs, and young people have to actually interview to attend. Has there been any discussion as to how we're going to restructure or rebrand Woodward High School to totally be a career tech institution? That's it.
Thank you very much. We'll hear next from Abria Drummonds, followed by Sharika Buckner. Who can come down and be ready to go next? So Ms. Drummonds and Ms. Buckner could both come down, followed by Mr. Smith.
Good evening. I am Abria Drummonds. I am a parent at Fairview German and Quillithin Language School. I'm also an LSDMC member. I'm also a LSDMC member, and I am also the president of our parent organization. And I'll just read it off so I can stand in my two minutes. But I was really intrigued that we are now going to slogan ourselves with "Your Purpose, Our Legacy," where Fairview is also CPS and Frau Rabel's appeal to keep our two teacher positions in grades K through three and four through six, our reading specialist and super sub have been denied. The laws of the fourth through sixth teacher will push classroom sizes to 31 children per class, which no teacher in America will agree, that that class has conducive to an efficient learning environment. Tonight, it was also stated that the jumps in proficiencies were due to special efforts to increase equity, yet current cuts to our staff will basically segregate Fairview from the goals and guardrails that you are using in your approach to academics and CPS. Instruction design methods of alignment with the needs of our students will be officially cut from Fairview. Our reading specialists will be cut due to our Title I status, if I'm correct, yet with the lottery system, the rise in diversity has increased our students who will push us to be eligible for Title I benefits. It was said that those numbers are reviewed every five years. However, with our drastic jump in our levels, a five-year average will endure because we're currently sitting at 45% now. So we're asking the board to please reconsider the appeal that Frau Rabel, I mean Principal Rabel has sent out regarding the cuts to our K through three teacher, our fourth through six teacher, our reading specialist, and our super sub. I do know the super subs may be cut across the board, but definitely our fourth through six teacher, K through three, and reading specialist. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We have Ms. Buckner, followed by Mr. Smith, and President Sellers, we'll put you at the end of the online.
Hi, my name is Sharika Buckner, and I'm a senior Clark Montessori. To graduate, we have to do a senior project, which is a topic, a year-long topic where we research, we do interviews, and gather data. I decided to do my topic on school lunch, and I did like a school survey. I have a hand that I can pass out afterwards. And basically, I have like pictures of like a week of like the main lunches students pick, and I have both positive and negative feedback. Some of the positive things were, you know, like the lunches had like a lot of variety, like fruits and vegetables, like they had options for those with like allergies and restrictions. But like some of the negatives were like, some of the foods were like boiled or moldy and like really processed. And I know there's like a lot of restrictions on like school lunch and like the guidelines and everything, but I hope you could take into consideration from like what I found, and maybe like see if you could improve anything or like whatnot. But yeah.
Thank you very much for your research and for your presentation. Thank you again very, very much, Sharika, and we have now Brad Smith. And then Rob, we'll transition to the online as soon as we're done with Brad. Thanks.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm speaking to you as a taxpayer, as a teacher, and as a field representative for the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers. I'm speaking to you tonight about the complete lack of transparency surrounding the school budgets and staffing. Our contract states that staffing and school budgets should be at the schools by December the 20th. They didn't arrive until the end of January. I got mine on January 26th. No budgets were provided to the schools. Until CFT insisted that title budgets be provided at schools, they were provided. Our teachers, our parents that are all part of ILT took their own time to have emergency ILT meetings to discuss staffing, made decisions about their staffing for next year, only to have the budget and staffing sheets changed three more times after they met. This complete lack of transparency creates a huge problem of trust across this district. And so we still don't have complete budgets. We still don't have staffing sheets. They were changed yet again, do not sent to the teachers of the school. There is one school at least who has not had their appeal answered. And so this complete lack of transparency is creating huge problems of trust across this district. If we care about what's best for our students, then we should be letting the teachers of the building make decisions that are going to be in the best interest of students because they know they're in the buildings. And also, we want to retain teachers. We need to build trust with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rob or Dan, if you all could emcee our online speakers this evening? Thank you very much.
Yes, our first three speakers. Karen Coon, followed by Kendra Phelps, followed by Melody Riggs. Go ahead, Ms. Coon.
Can everyone see and hear me?
Go ahead, Ms. Coon.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Wright. My name is Karen Coon, and I'm the high school counselor at Euler School. As a school counselor, I am very concerned about the new position of graduation specialist that has been posted. These roles have been created without input or feedback from the current school-level administrators or school counselors.
Hold on one second, Ms. Coon. It's not coming through to...
Oh, the boardroom left. Receiving any video?
You'll need to unmute.
All right, your video went away. Am I back? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Good, I was like, I can see Melody talking to Ben. Did you hear anything that I said?
No.
Okay, I'll start over. Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Wright. My name is Karen Coon, and I'm the high school counselor at Euler School. As a school counselor, I am very concerned about the new position of graduation specialist that has been posted. These roles have been created without input or feedback from the current school-level administrators or school counselors who have the best sense of what individual students need in order to successfully reach graduation on time. Additionally, the graduation specialist job description is almost an exact duplication of services as school counselors provide, but the new position is civil service and does not require a master's degree. While it is very important to support students as they work to meet their graduation requirements, and our high schools obviously need support in meeting state graduation rate expectations, school counselors must be the ones to lead these initiatives. As school counselors, we complete five semesters of specialized training in our master's programs and must pass the licensure exam in order to prove we understand and can implement the best practices in supporting students in academic, social, emotional, and post-secondary needs and goals. We also complete ongoing professional development to support graduation-related initiatives. The best way to support our students in graduating on time is to add school counselors at the schools to meet the American School Counselor Association recommended ratio of one school counselor to every 250 students, or even a lower ratio at higher needs schools like my school. In the five years I have been at Euler, we have gone from a 67% graduation rate to a graduation high of 92.5%, and that is because my caseload has been in the range of 150 to 200 students, allowing me to be present and student-centered and support the ABCs of academics, behavior, and culture at my school. Supporting school counselors is important, but adding duplicative positions that lack the training is not the way to do it. My hope is that we continue to hire licensed school counselors to decrease the ratios at our larger schools, and even implement clerical support in the counseling department so that counselors can lose less time to paperwork and spend more time supporting students with their mental health and academic achievement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coon. Our next speaker is Kendra Phelps, followed by Melody Riggs, followed by Leslie Hadamar Hand. Go ahead, Ms. Phelps.
Hello, President Lindy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, and I truly hope that you will take the time to listen to all school stakeholders that have logged in today to speak, because they may all share a different perspective that would be beneficial to hear. Our CPS school counselors and school social workers are critical to the success of our students. Students and their families are facing numerous challenges. It's the expertise of the school counselors and school social workers, as well as the trusting relationships that they have built with the families they serve, that make them the right individuals to lead the efforts in helping the students overcome these challenges. I'm concerned about some cuts that the district is making to the counseling department. That is not okay when our mental health partners and Children's Hospital have waiting lists. I also want to speak to the postings for the roles of graduation specialist and attendance specialist. At our education initiatives panel meeting, we pointed out that the work of those positions is work that our counselors and school social workers are highly qualified for, are and in fact now doing. When the positions were posted, and then we were able to see the job descriptions, it further confirmed this. These services to our students are too important for us to lower the standards of the work that our educators are already doing at a high level. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melody Riggs, followed by Leslie Hadamar Hand, followed by Samantha Stevenson. Go ahead, Ms. Riggs.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm a CPS employee, formerly a librarian at Rothenburg, and currently at Walnut Hills High School, so I understand some of the equity issues we are facing. And I'm also a parent with children attending Hyde Park and Walnut Hills High School. And I just want to address some of the cuts that are being made at Walnut. And despite appeals, we are, continue to be told that these positions are going to be cut. And I'm concerned, not just because these are my fellow employees, but they have me concerned as a parent. Two of these positions are related to mental health, a counselor and a school social worker. I am a parent of a ninth grader who has had some mental health concerns, and it is hard right now to get mental health help. Another position that's being cut is our library aide. She is the one who opens our library before and after school, and if her position is cut, as her contract differs greatly from mine, kids will no longer have access before and after school. My own child does not have room in her schedule for a study hall, so she's dependent on those before and after-school times. And I realize, you know, I already make the sacrifice now. I don't take a planned period, because this position with a library aide allows me kind of have that time to plan while there are students in with study hall. And speaking of study hall, our access to study hall would be reduced, because my co-librarian and I both are constantly working with classes and could not supervise students. And then the only technology support that is at our school and available daily is a position slated to be cut. And I know it's been brought up and suggested that a teacher or two could fill this role as like a tech coordinator. I did that job at Rothenburg, a school with less than 300 students, and that was easily five to six hours a week doing those things in addition to a full teaching load. So a school eight times as large, I don't know how that is going to be done by any teacher.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Riggs. Our next speaker is Leslie Hadamar Hand, followed by Samantha Stevenson, followed by Raylan Klusemeyer. Go ahead, Ms. Hadamar Hand.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Hadamar, good evening, Board and Superintendent Wright. I am a school counselor at Virtual Cincinnati Digital High School. I've been with the district for 30 years, and I too am concerned about the graduation specialist position. I want to read you something from American School Counselor Association. Talks about the role of a school counselor. It says, "School counselors, our school districts work diligently to employ the most highly trained personnel for dealing with these issues and may employ non-school counseling credentialed staff for specific functions. Although non-school counseling credentialed staff members provide valuable services to students, they do not have the training or skills or design or implement a school counseling program, nor are they qualified to be placed in the role of a school counselor." We view this role of the graduation specialist as a way to supplant us, not support us, and we really are asking for support in our current positions. Currently, at Cincinnati Virtual High School, we have increased from two counselors to four counselors this year, and we have doubled our graduation rate already this year of our students who are arguably our most complicated students. So we really would like for you to reevaluate this graduation specialist and keep in mind that everybody has licenses, whether it be school counseling, school social work, whatever it may be. And we would just ask that this position would merit the same kind of, same kind of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Samantha Stevenson, followed by Raylan Klusemeyer, followed by Sharice Adams. Go ahead, Ms. Stevenson.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Samantha Stevenson, and I am a teacher at Walnut Hills High School. I would like to echo the sentiments of a lot of speakers, but especially Melody Riggs, my coworker and librarian. The budgets need to be reconsidered, and our staff positions need to be kept everywhere. But let me talk about Walnut Hills High School. If these positions, a full-time tech person, a library assistant, a counselor, a social worker, an employee in our college information center, and more are cut, and the funds don't get reallocated to save them, the learning of the students will suffer. It is imperative, not optional, but necessary, that these positions are kept. You will see changes in student learning, staff morale, and overall productivity. Please consider what will happen to the 2,700 students at Walnut Hills High School that will no longer have essential library services, tech support, an entire counselor, a social worker, a college information center, and more. I also watched your meeting concerning the amount of CPS students that go to Walnut Hills High School. It seemed to me that perhaps Superintendent Wright was interested in getting more CPS students into Walnut. Why would you take staff members if that is your goal? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Raylan Klusemeyer, followed by Sharice Adams, followed by Leslie Mooney. Go ahead, Ms. Klusemeyer. You have to unmute, Ms. Klusemeyer. Okay, go ahead. We'll come back to you. Next speaker is Sharice Adams, followed by Leslie Mooney, followed by Ms. Klusemeyer. Go ahead, Ms. Adams. Are you there?
Can you hear me now?
We can, yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you for the opportunity. I want to speak in regards to the social worker position. I am a current social worker at Aiken High School. The job in itself, I am blessed to be able to serve and advocate for the families, the students and families. The biggest concern I have is that the new job that is, that was being advertised currently matches the current job that we're doing right now. Currently, we are working, dealing with attendance and SEO work. We're collaborating with the court system. We collaborate with our school counselors. We work with families to come up with a plan to be able to meet the needs as to what the board as well as Superintendent Wright wants to be able to increase graduation rates, increase reading, everything that's been implemented based on the strategic plan. So my concern is that I think we need more social workers in the building as well as counselors, and then have more supportive clerical staff that can be able to help us do the job more effectively.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Our next speaker is Leslie Mooney, followed by, we will try Ms. Klusemeyer again, and then Julie Bianchi. Go ahead, Ms. Mooney.
Hello, everyone. Hi, I'm Leslie Mooney. I'm the chair of the Fairview Clifton German Language School and parent of four students at Fairview. As has been said already this evening, on the topic of school budgets, I just wanted to call attention, as is our duty as LSDMC, to some of the needs that I feel like have been overlooked, a unique situation at Fairview. For instance, we are unique in terms of both race and socioeconomic status and diversity in the district, and we've always been so, but even more so, of course, in the last seven years since the changes to the enrollment policy. Meanwhile, we have maintained through all the changes, four out of five stars for achievement and... and consider the high level of academic rigor very important to the experience at Fairview and aim to keep it that way. So some specific equity considerations though, given that changing population. As Avria mentioned, we've gone from 27% of kids enrolled in the free and reduced lunch program in the 17, 18 school year to very rapidly, almost half of our students now qualify for free and reduced lunch. And yet we have not received any additional resources. And so as L S D M C Chair, it's my job not just to look at the school, but down to the individual child, right? So student-centered decision-making starts with looking at each of those roughly 340 children at Fairview who need a reading specialist, who need to have K through three and four through six bands extra teachers to have those smaller class sizes. So we really asked the superintendent or someone from her staff to come to our L S D M C meeting this Thursday or to meet with me and our principal again to go through these unique circumstances. And I would like to know more about the Title I designation. I understand it's very rare and unique for a school to move into that designation that hasn't been there already. But I think we really need some transparency and conversation about what that looks like so that we can really serve and be equitable to the students at Fairview. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney. Ms. Klusemeyer, you're next, followed by Julie Bianchi and Bianca Gay. Go ahead, Ms. Klusemeyer.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members and superintendent. My name is Raylan Klusemeyer and I'm a school counselor for grades nine and 10 at Walnut Hills High School. The first thing I'd like to address is this new role, high school graduation specialist. Every single description within both qualifications and key responsibilities are that as of a school counselors. The first key responsibility listed is as follows. Employ a profile of characteristics of potential dropouts to identify high school and middle school students with a high probability of not graduating. DPS currently has proactive services in place within the school counseling program at each school, but yet the district is eliminating key factors within those services, including school counselors and community coordinators. Nothing within the qualifications nor key responsibilities mentions this role needing to know, understand and help educate others on graduation requirements statewide and school-wise, as each school can differ. And yet their title is high school graduation specialist. Nine total high school graduation specialist roles are being offered next school year, but yet three school counselors are being surplus. The state advised school counselor to student ratio is one school counselor to 250 students. If you divide Walnut Hills' current enrollment number, 2,556, divided by its current school counselor number, eight, that leaves a ratio of one school counselor to 320 students, which is well above 250. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Bianchi, followed by Bianca Gay, followed by Jared Knight. Go ahead, Ms. Bianchi.
Hello, thank you. You said that correctly. Yes, good evening, Board members and Superintendent Wright. My name is Julie Bianchi and I'm a licensed professional school counselor for grades seven and eight at SCPA. I would like to mention, I agree with the sentiments expressed by the school counselors who have spoken already this evening. I love being a school counselor in this district and serving CPS students. I am here to share more about the positive impact school counselors have on students and how our unique skill set is beneficial not only to our students, but the overall culture of the school and our communities. Students, we are highly educated with master's degree school counseling. We often continue our education with additional graduate level coursework. School counselors are certified to work with students from grades K through 12, serving the whole child through a comprehensive and developmental school counseling program across three tiers, the whole group, small group and individual levels, and three domains, academic, social, emotional and college and career post-secondary. We are school leaders who collaborate with administrators, teachers, parents and other professionals in our school community. And we strive to follow the American School Counseling Association's model for best practices, which is comprised of four components, define, deliver, manage and assess. We define our program by analyzing data and setting goals. We deliver by implementing counseling at the three tiers previously mentioned. We manage by tracking individual and whole group progress, organize and plan research and engage in professional development. And we assess periodically by reviewing data for our school and our community, asking, is this working? How are our students better as a result of our program? We look for closing the gap opportunities and equity issues within our schools. And we strive with our certifications and our training to close those gaps. So I urge you to consider the importance of school counselors in all of our schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bianca Gay, followed by Jared Knight, followed by Sandy Horine. Go ahead, Ms. Gay.
Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, my name is Bianca Gay. I am a school counselor at Wilbur High School and I also serve as the lead counselor. First of all, thank you guys for everything that you guys are doing, Board members and Superintendent Wright. We are excited as school counselors to be within, to work within, getting back to the basics. Because the good thing about school counselors, we work within those domains. So academic, college and career and social emotional. So we are definitely on board to support the vision that our district is moving towards. We just want to make sure that these roles are not being cut and not just looked at just based on ratios because we do have to look at the social emotional aspects for different schools and the need. We have to make sure that we take care of the SEO part of our students to be able to get to college and career or academic or even just engaging in class. So we have to make sure that the support area for all schools is continued to increase, never decreasing. So I'm asking that, you know, there is no cuts with the school counselors, but also of course the graduation specialists, that is exactly what school counselors are trained to do. And we want to make sure that it is a trained and credentialed person because some of those conversations can be very personal and some of our students can take things very personally. We want to make sure that it's someone trained to have those conversations and guide those students to success. So thank you and those are our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jared Knight, followed by Sandra Horine, followed by Chanelle Stevens. Go ahead, Mr. Knight.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening and thank you, everybody, for allowing me to speak. I just want to, I'm a social worker over at Aiken New Tech High School and I want to echo the same concerns that my colleagues and ed support have, school social workers and school counselors regarding the job postings for positions that mirror current positions in the district. Everything that we learned in our undergrad and in our graduate programs were specific to the position that we were hired for. And specifically for the attendance specialist piece. I'm having a hard time with making sense of the requirements for that position and how they match the salary. It's not, a graduate degree is not required. The job qualifications and responsibilities are very similar, if not exactly the same, for a school social worker position, but it almost pays 15,000 more in the door. To me, as a first-year social worker and a first-year employee with the district, it is almost a disregard for all the hard work and everything that I needed to accomplish to become a school social worker. I'm very proud of what I do and being with Cincinnati Public Schools. And that's a big concern for me. And I just wanted to echo everything that everyone else said regarding the graduation position as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last two speakers are Sandra Horine, followed by Chanelle Stevens. Go ahead, Ms. Horine.
Greetings. My name is Sandy Horine and I just want to say that I would not work for any other district besides CPS. I've been a part of CPS since 2004. I am a counselor at Aiken High School. I'm not going to repeat something that some of my colleagues have said, but I just want to say that, you know, as a licensed school counselor, we not only do master's work, we have a semester of practicum, we have a whole year of internship. I have personally supervised probably 10 to 12 interns. And so I know what it takes for the growth to excel at this position. And I very much support anyone working in this line of work to have the education certification and license that we have. The other point that I just wanted to make is graduation is a systems thing. It doesn't start, obviously, at 12th grade. Our seventh and eighth grade counselors, our ninth and 10th grade counselors, our 11th and 12th grade, all of us work together and it's a systems that brings it around. For example, Aiken, I'm sure other schools could say the same thing, but we have a student that got a full ride to Skidmore this year. We got a student that has a presidential scholarship, DUC. We have six students that got full rides at Miami. We have a whole, we have probably six to eight students who got into Gen One. We have students that are going into HVAC apprentices after high school. And that's not just me. That is Ms. Tam and Ms. Wheeler and Ms. Porter. All of us, we're all a systems approach. So putting a standalone graduation specialist who doesn't have the training and the licensure that we have is not going to be the best thing for the students. We, I know we all want what's best for the students. We want best practices. Best practices are to put a licensed certified person in the positions that will help us get the results that we want, to have better attendance and to have better graduation rates. We need the holistic approach. We need a systems approach. We need licensed certified persons. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Chanelle Stevens. Go ahead, Ms. Stevens.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Hi, yes, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Chanelle Stevens and I am the school social worker at Dater High School. And I'm just here to just share my perspective on the new role that was posted in regards to the attendance specialist. I want to first just say thank you Superintendent Wright and the Board members for all of your support of the social workers. I'm new to the district. I'm a proud graduate of Whither High School. And what I would really like to say is that the attendance support specialist that is being taken away from us is the support that we need as social workers. The role that is created, the description seems as if it's similar to what we already are doing. As a licensed independent social worker, I think that the work that I get to do every day is driven with passion and also with expertise. The work around attendance that we do with juvenile court and a diversion court and the things that we do to help connect students, really is the type of work that should be continued with certified social workers. And that in order for us to be who we are and continue to do the work that we do in the district, we need more bandwidth. And that will look best, probably so, if we have more school social workers to support the work in the schools. Some of us have a partner and some of us do not. And so I'm just really struggling to see what this new role is adding to the work that we're doing and how is it going to truly give us the support? And when I say us, the school social workers, how is this role supporting us to continue to do the great work that we were hired to do? As well as supporting us to continue to address the underlying barriers that our students face, continuing to allow us to do the interventions and the groups and the connections with parents and families. And so I just really hope that in whatever the focus is for this role, I'm not sure that the people that are on the floor were...
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I think we have one more online speaker, followed by President Sellers.
That's right. Valerie Grant signed up in time, lost connection. Ms. Grant, if you're available, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking also on behalf of Fairview Clifton German Language School and the budget cuts that are affecting our teacher staffing. Everything that has been said, I think, is very important. I just wanted to call out a couple, few extra points to reinforce that the students that will be most negatively impacted by the loss of teachers are our youngest and most disadvantaged students. And they're the ones that we should all really be serving to help and assist and help them have positive outcomes. Additionally, if you look at the research and education, the impacts are actually long-term of larger class sizes. Students who have poorer outcomes in a larger classroom size actually sustain those poorer outcomes for a longer amount of time, up to like eight years, depending on the research that you look at. And finally, just more specifically to Fairview, I think if you look at our student population data, you will see that this cut would be forced to, the staffing cut, I'm sorry, excuse me, the staffing cut for the fourth to sixth grade student group would be forced to be filled again in one year. And I know personally from my own work that staffing positions is much more expensive and much more labor and time intensive than it is to try to find a way to maintain students. So I would just urge the superintendent and the board to look at the student size data and make sure that this is the right way to use our budget to serve our students in the best way. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say I'm here this evening to also talk about these changes to our counselors and school social workers. CFT and our members have concerns about the district basically contracting out our positions to civil service, non-represented positions with the addition of attendance specialist and graduation specialist. Two out of these three additional administrative positions at the title high schools are actually doing the work of our counselors and school social workers. And they are the ones who are currently licensed to do that. I do not think these positions fall under the purview of an administrative position. After seeing the postings on Thursday afternoon, Thursday morning, everyone is convinced that these are not administrative positions. I've gotten calls from all across the district about these additional positions. And they fall really under the recognition clause in section 110 of page, on page one of our collective bargaining agreements. Schools, the schools ILTs and LSDMCs did not vote to approve these new mandated positions. It is extremely important that schools have some say in what positions they deem necessary for their school. And everyone believes this is just another example of administrative bloat. Since the year 2015, 2016, we have seen a great administrative bloat in our district. In the last, since 2015, 2016 school year, we've had 31 administrative retirees, 125 resignations and 431 new hires or promotions. That is an addition of 275 positions. It's very evident across our district. And we need to have people, the teachers who are working directly and giving direct services to students. All of the attendance clerks have been cut from the schools, even though clerical support is still necessary. With the CFOP cuts to those clerical positions, at the start of the 2021 school year, the district hired 14 CFOP represented support specialists at a starting salary of $21 an hour. The yearly salary for these employees averages about $35,000 a year to assist CFT represented social workers to help promote student attendance and reduce truancy. These positions were created to be the link between school, home and community. The goal of these positions was to increase student attendance, positive school practices, classroom instructional time and internal capacity. Mainly, the goal of these positions was to decrease the chronic absenteeism and avoid exclusionary discipline. But with COVID happening and all of the changes that we've had and all of the problems around transportation, we have had a difficult time and these positions have been instrumental with trying to get our kids back to school and on time. On February 27th, the district posted a supervisor-manager assignment, high school attendance specialist. These positions are to be based at the 11 high schools at an average salary of $75,000 per year. And the position summary listed on the CPS online application states, "The attendance specialist monitors school attendance and works with school administrators, students, parents and school support team with the focus on keeping students in school, improving student and school attendance rates and educating staff and families." These are the positions that CFT and CFOP have already been doing. We've been doing them for years. We've been doing them for years. They are in our collective bargaining agreements. The descriptions are in our collective bargaining agreements. And at this time, CFT and CFOP believes that the district needs to remove all postings and pause all hirings until all of these issues can be resolved. Does the board approve of these additional civil service administrative positions in chaos? Because that is not the proper place for these positions to be held. I have made a packet for each one of you, and in the packet I have included the American School Counselor Association guidelines. I have included the online application system, the CFOP information for their positions that basically have been eliminated, the contract language of where we are the exclusive representatives for school social workers and counselors. On a transfer round that was sent out, it has under for teacher vacancies, it has grades nine through 12 graduation specialist as a position. Though really, there hasn't even been clear communication about this. We have found that there is information that Atlanta Public Schools have this very same type of position, where they are not, they don't have their master's, but they do have the Georgia license. We are in Ohio. In Ohio, the license must include a master's degree, and we're not going to go to where it is anybody with a four-year degree that they're not licensed to do the job. That is irresponsible on the part of the district, and it's not fair to our students. And then I do have a list of questions that I would like for answers on from the board and the district. How are these positions for the 23, 24-year posted when the budget has not even been approved by the board yet? How do we know that these are positions that can, the board is going to be able to fund? What kind of CPS data was used to make the decision for these positions? What type of research on current roles and responsibilities of social workers and school counselors was conducted? Were counselors consulted for ideas? Were social workers consulted? I don't think so. Were principals consulted? No. Can you show the data from these conversations? What are the specific needs that are not being met that are the reason for these new positions to be created? What type of research was done with ODE for these positions in terms of educational requirement for working with students in this capacity? What other districts in Ohio were looked at for this research? We don't need research from other states. We have our own guidelines in Ohio. Has the research been conducted about why we have problems with attendance? The history includes COVID, bus changes, student home lives. The current attendance specialist job is not going to change as this is written. Why do we not look at using our current attendance support to be in full-time supporting social workers? This is a quarter of the amount they are proposing for the new positions. How are you going to explain to the taxpayers the duplication of services that are being included in these high-salary positions, and they are less qualified? When the duplicate, current certified master-level licensed positions are currently exist? How was the salary level of administrative pay decided when these positions are only bachelor-level positions, when our certified licensed master-level are specialized in these, do not make this type of salary? And in fact, they work 260 days does not just affect that they have no training and no certification or license in the state of Ohio. Why are we cutting counselor positions for less-trained applicants? Three counselor positions have already been cut. If we need these areas, increase the counselors. That is what they are trained for. Aren't our kids worth having people with the correct training and licensure? The current contract we have with Juvenile Court has a CPS social worker liaison attached to it. Why are we duplicating this? How are the two going to work together? What are the new job descriptions going to look like with the social workers and counselors? What are we going to do if we lose people due to these changes of having uncertified, unlicensed people doing our jobs? Could the counselors and social workers do a presentation for the board about what we do and why this duplication of services is unnecessary? Because we have highly qualified, very professionals who are currently employed by the district, and this is a slap in the face to every single certified person in our district. I have a packet for each one of you, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Julie. In a minute here, we're going to move to the next item, which is approval of minutes. I'll just offer for folks who are watching, and it's nice that we have a larger number this evening, and folks here as well. People may have noticed that our last speaker went beyond those two minutes. The contract between the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers and CPS does grant the CFT president the right to speak at any meeting, and there's a tradition that that time be both at the end of hearing of the public and without the two-minute time limit, if that's new for folks. So on the minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting February 6th and the business meeting February 6th, please.
Moved.
Thank you, Vice President Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on to item F, we have only one committee report this evening, which is from the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole. All of us were there for this meeting of the Committee of the Whole. I did not get a chance to ask her ahead of time, but Member Jones, would you be willing to provide a very swift summary?
I'm prepared.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, I am presenting for board approval the report of the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole, which was held on February 15th at 4:00. We had four presentations, and we started it off with President, Board President Lindy giving an update on the three-month board priorities, which he did as well today, and I'm sure he'll do that at every meeting. Our first topic was presented by our Chief Academic Officer, Shaquita Butler, with the superintendent virtually, and regarding the third-grade reading law, and we know it as the third-grade guarantee. And it was, we, there was data presented, but the overall presentation, in the overall presentation, Ms. Butler shared with us, gave us an update about where the House Bill 497 was in the upcoming General Assembly. And if this bill had been suspended for a while, it has now been removed from suspension and is in action now, and will be reintroduced to the 135th General Assembly, which means that there needs to be great focus on the third-grade guarantee and getting our students ready and, and get that, for them to pass the test. So there was a lot of really robust conversation about that topic, including information about the criteria regarding the third-grade guarantee. There was lots, there was some comparative data presented, and there was lots of very good questions addressed in there with a couple of assignments made or requests for information, and the superintendent has committed to providing additional information as needed. I just want to add that the report today gave some basic, it was sort of a natural sequence to giving some information on where we stand with the third-grade reading test. So I'll leave that as is, and I'm sure we'll get more on that, more information on that. The second presentation was from our governmental liaison, Mr. Eric Kearney, who, for the sake, for the public knowledge, this was, the presentation presented by our governmental liaisons used to be presented in the Health and Safety Committee, and it was transitioned to Student Achievement, but it was also specifically assigned to the superintendent to work with the two governmental liaisons. And the work that she is doing with them is to really sort of establish kind of where we are in our contract with them, what role can, what role do they serve, and how can they best serve the needs of the board and the district around our legislative and policy priorities? And I do know that the superintendent continues to work with them, so this was just the first start of that. So Mr. Kearney did update us in his report on where some of the crucial bills lie in state legislature. Of particular interest was Senate Bill 1, which there is a resolution on the agenda tonight where we will act on, on this. And this is the bill to rename the Department of Education and Work, the Department of Ed, to include workforce development under the umbrella of the governor. So we will, we have taken, this board has taken a clear position on that, and we'll be presenting that resolution tonight. Okay, so we also spent a great deal of time talking about the Walnut Hills testing. It was a very strong presentation. The presentation consisted of explanation around why we're using the Iowa test as opposed to the Terranova, which we previously had. Superintendent Wright presented some data around some of the cut scores and where students scored. I think the board in general agreed that we needed to really look more closely at this data, and there again were lots of questions asked. Let's see, I was trying to think, see where the recommendation was. There were other suggestions made, one being around reviewing the enrollment policies. We looked at the breakdown of the data around students who actually attended Walnut and students who qualified to attend but didn't attend. The committee, the board members also requested to see qualitative data, survey administered to current, to the current administration, on what they are seeing with students coming into Walnut. And then other subjects around that regarding sixth-grade students attending neighborhood schools who are not eligible to attend Walnut, and the need, of course, to increase access and ways to strengthen diversity. So that is a work in progress, and we look forward to getting additional data accordingly. And then finally, we had a discussion around the summer school update, summer scholars program. The full scope of that, again, is, is online, but some of the topics that were included was around the purpose of summer scholars, some of the adjustments that were being made on that, the 2023 key elements, core programming, just a general overview of what that would look like. I know one of the crucial questions that was asked by board members had to do with how was the messaging and the communication going out to families, which is very important, high priority? And I believe, at least I've seen some communication, but again, we are looking forward to having a very successful summer school, summer scholars program for our students. The final topic, foreign language adoption update, was suspended, and I believe it's on the agenda tonight. So I present the committee minutes as written and hope for adoption.
Thank you, Board Member Jones. Any discussion on the student, excuse me, let's have a motion to adopt the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole report first. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Craig, and thank you for the report, Board Member Jones. Now, any discussion or questions about that report? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you, and I thought it was a very good meeting and very full of information on critically important topics. I was a little disappointed that I thought the Walnut piece may not have gotten the full kind of emphasis that it, that I think I heard, and we're thinking back on the discussion about the, I think, where Member Jones mentioned, access and diversity thematically were there, but I think there was also a little bit more discussion about, that may not have been captured in the minutes, about the percentages as we look at access and diversity, and more in line with more of a, if there could be more of a comparison with the percentages that we had prior to Iowa. I just think that that was a larger part of the discussion, and would like to, you know, hear back, not now, but if the, or not change the minutes or anything like that, but I do think that we, I think we were, as a board, there was a greater strength of consensus about the access and diversity, and it would relate to a cut score, and I know the superintendent was going to get back to us with some cut score information somewhere along the line, if I remember the dialogue correctly. That's, just wanted to say that I, I kind of remember that, I do remember that emphasis.
Do you like a response on that this evening, Ms. Bolton?
No, 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 I just wanted to emphasize it.
Does it make, is there anything you'd like to ask about or share, and there needing to be, but just for clarity?
I can, just for clarity. So in the presentation, we did discuss, of course, access and diversity. We also discussed the cut scores, what they were prior to going to Iowa, from the Terranova to Iowa. And we talked about the change, the year of COVID, that we changed the entry score to get into Walnut, and looked at the data for those students, how they were doing respectively now that the score has been released versus how students had done, you know, with the score that was the same. So what I had in terms of information for us to bring back to the board, and we did meet with the, with the principal front, we have already met with the principal from Walnut Hills, but what I had, the information that I had to bring back to the board was there was a request for the survey from staff, or more, I think I heard that in the minutes, the qualitative information from staff about the performance of the students with the reduced cut score. So was there a piece that we missed there as well?
Can I address, can I follow up? It is in here. There were nine points made. Your point is written in the report, just as Superintendent said. I just didn't go over each of the nine points, so it was...
Thank you, and thank you. Summary, I just want to, I know that as a board member, I sat here for two, almost three years with this as a controversial issue, and I don't want to go through another year of it.
Ms. Bolton knows how much I hate details like that, so...
Process is your focus.
Thank you very much for the discussion point, Member Bolton, for the response, Superintendent. Any other discussion or questions on the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole report? All in favor of accepting the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, committee report is adopted. We're going to move on to item G, which is an important topic that is one of our priorities for this three-month time period, and we're going to have an update, I believe, from Member Bolton.
Yes, I will make this very, very quick. I know that all board members are interested, and we've been talking about this for months, to catch the public up just sort of where we are. As everyone knows, we've gone through and have shared goals and shared guardrails. The superintendent and the administration and team and district are working hard on reaching those goals and developing plans and work groups to do so. But what we have not yet completed, and we promised the public that we would, would be a effort again at the community engagement regarding our district's vision, mission, and as we are calling it, forecast. And we've had any number of months of discussion. We have also an attempt to try to get that work done, parallel to the administration's work as well, and we want to try to get that work done no later than early May or so in order to impact perhaps the budget. And I've been informed today that we have received information from one of the groups that we were particularly interested in, having already done the RFP at the beginning of this whole process last year, and that Alma is, as a group, Alma Advisory Group is interested in leading our community engagement piece of that effort. And they are submitting a plan to, I think, be shared with us tomorrow. I think that's the promise, so that we can all look at it and react to it, and then also hopefully vote positively, or what have you, at our next meeting, and get started promptly on their schedule and accomplish this great effort of... and accomplish this great effort of vision, mission, and forecast. Forecast meaning the term that Superintendent introduced us to, which is future. Looking to the future in the several years forward, what our community is expecting this district to be. So we look forward to getting that started. And President Lindy will be sharing that Alma document when he has it.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any questions from board members on the strategic planning next steps? Excited for us to be moving along. Great. Item H, we're on to presentations. We have two this evening. The first, we're going to hear about an award, and we'll turn it over to Treasurer Wagner.
Thank you, President Lindy. So the Government Finance Officers Association does an analysis each year of this very large, comprehensive annual financial report. And the district in the past has won an award for the accuracy and completeness of this report. And so they provided, they usually come here and provide the certificate to us, but they've quit traveling, so they provided a video. I think, Rob, you have that video?
Greetings from the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm Chris Morley, GF Way's Executive Director. It is my honor to recognize you for receiving GF Way's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Receiving this award demonstrates your finance team's commitment to preparing an annual financial report that is organized, readable, and transparent. Meeting the high standards required to receive this award is a mark of distinction, of which you should be very proud. I congratulate you and your staff. Thank you, and congratulations again on this impressive achievement.
So thank you and congratulations again, Treasurer Wagner, to you and your team. We will move on to our second presentation. For, just as a quick reminder, this was one item on the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole Agenda, for which we didn't quite have enough time last meeting. And so we put it on the presentations agenda for tonight.
And we will review the information as quickly as we can. One of the reasons that it was on the Committee of the Whole, the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole, is because it is curriculum. And before we, there will be an item on the treasurer's report next board meeting, and we wanted you to have background on the information for the item prior to bringing the item for action. So this is a carryover actually from last school year. So while Rob is pulling up the presentation for us, this is a carryover from last school year where we recognized that we had not had resources for our world languages students and departments for a period of time. So in partnership with the Curriculum Council for World Languages as well as the district-level leadership for World Languages, this gave an update for where we would go moving forward with really all of the languages that we support throughout the district. So criteria, we started with the curriculum adoption, and I won't go through each one of the areas. I did provide this information prior to our SA Cal meeting, but just to, just kind of talk about very briefly where we started. So we started this information with the adoption for the criteria, the adoption criteria for the resources that were being used. And in order for us to move the resources forward, they had to meet that criteria that was a criteria that was cross-referenced by the committees. In terms of the overall languages, I did want to make sure that we are clear on which languages we're talking about. And so this is pretty exciting because these are currently the languages that we teach in our district, and we see that we have just a variety when it comes to languages. In many of them, they're taught in one or two schools, but there are others that they're taught in several schools. We also know that we have our schools that have a focus on language, and so therefore, we see more of those languages taught in those school buildings. In terms of overall considerations, we also wanted to make sure that the languages provided high-quality resources to our world language students, that it gave them full access, it also gave them technology access, and that they were aligned to the overall world languages framework. Financial considerations, so this started with the adoption of the budget for year one. This was discussed last year, it's just bringing it back so that as we begin to move forward with the purchase of the resources. So it started with the total budget of $1.5 million overall for the year one totals. The recommendation from last year moving into this year was to set aside from ESTER funds for $625,000. There would be a recurring cost, just like with most of our curriculum, and much of the curriculum is technology-based, and so therefore, you have a recurring cost that goes along with that in terms of a license. And then the request for proposals for overall assessments accounts for approximately $120,000 as well. Okay, on the additional presentation as well that you have, and it's just another document that goes along with it, but I did want to make sure that from here, we saw the languages that we're offering and the enrollment in those courses, so that we also know how many students we are talking about addressing. So you have this information also, but it does give you an opportunity to see not just the subject, but the number of students that we're serving in the subject area as well. So collectively, we have almost 10,000 students, which is pretty exciting, that are enrolled in our world languages program, and our goal is to only increase in that area. And we can also provide, if it is the will of the board, I'm sorry. On here, we also provided the breakdown for the schools that the languages are also taught in. So it does give you an opportunity to see that as well. That ends the presentation, President.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Wright. Do board members have any questions or comments on the presentation on foreign language curriculum? World language, excuse me. Hearing one, Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, two things, and I hope I didn't miss this one, I just stepped out. But again, part of the larger report also included a reference to American Sign Language, which I think is, I think Dr. Moffett's really involved with that, has been supportive of it, me too. The other piece is, considering our international students, so to speak, our folks who, you know, that English is their second language, how does that impact how we help determine where the languages are or how we pursue advanced placement? Just, if you could, not a lot, just if you could kind of help me.
Sure, so I think it's twofold. One, we have to make sure that we are, this particular item is about teaching the students a new language. And so it's really looking at students that are not speakers of the language and how we are teaching them a new language. When we look at the breakdown of where the courses are, Rob, if you'll pull that back up with the, just the breakout of the courses. When we look at where the courses are, most of them are in our language schools, schools that have a heavy language focus, or they're in schools that do have a high ELL population as well. So that's something that you will see also. And when we think about our schools that are offering our AP coursework, we don't see as much of that. Most of our AP coursework for the languages is at Walnut Hills right now.
Just to think in terms of some paths, let me look at the AP, because I know we looked at the list of AP versus whatever. I just think it might be an interesting path for some of our students if, where English is not their first language, just as a path as they go through, matriculate through the grades and see if we can actually find that for a strength ultimately for them.
I definitely agree, and I think I've shared with the board before. You know, my daughter started in Spanish at seventh grade, so when she graduated, she graduated by literate and went to school with six hours of Spanish credit already because of the pathway you're talking about right now. So I believe it is an opportunity and a work in progress for us. But it's really pretty exciting to know that we have almost 10,000 students enrolled right now, and I only see that number growing next year as we really begin to be more intentional about where we're doing those foundational programs. Because in order to get them, the reason I referenced the seventh grade with my daughter is in order to get them to the AP level, by the time they get to high school, they have to have the foundational work starting much earlier. And we have some of our schools that are, of course, not just our foreign language school, our schools that have multiple languages, but we have some of our elementary schools that on their own, they started specials or elective programs, elective classes in Spanish. Or Spanish has been the primary one. So we want to make sure that we're able to capitalize on that so that, you know, two or three years from now, we're able to see more students in the AP coursework, but also getting the AP credit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Vice President Craig?
I just wanted to highlight something that was brought up last year, actually, and I believe it was either in the committee hole or at Student Achievement, when we were still having them separate, or at board meetings, I can't remember which one. But it was actually the benefit that students received to took the language work that they did in the high school level to that next part of their careers, whether it was going to college, being able to do international studies as a result, whether it was finding out that they had a career choice that they wanted to do that involved using the work that they did in the high school level of learning a new language. And so I think it's not something we should forget about. When we talk about the benefits of this, is that it extends far beyond just the language that they took in high school to get credit into college. In some cases, it opens up whole new opportunities for students who, you know, specifically, I remember us watching a video of a student who said she had never thought about going overseas, and then she took Spanish, learned, went to college, was continuing it, and it broadened her horizon of what she wanted to do. And so I don't think that should be forgotten about when we think about all the other things like music and arts. Foreign language is another one of those areas where it can open up opportunities that students never thought about the possibility for.
Thank you very much, Vice President Craig. Any other comments or questions? Wonderful. Thank you, Superintendent, for the presentation. We're going to move to Item I, which is resolutions for this evening. I'd like us to do the first two, and then I might ask for a 48-hour waiver to add a third around appointments for some vacancies on the CPP Board. But we'll do that after we take care of the first two. So, Member Jones, would you like to introduce our first resolution?
Yes, thank you, President Lindy. I would like to introduce to the board for their consideration a resolution opposing Ohio Senate Bill One, and I'd like to read it. I typically don't, but I think this is important for us to read. Whereas the Cincinnati City School District Board of Education believes that public education should be overseen by a nonpartisan and nonpolitical Department of Education, whereas the board believes that the public education system should be accountable to the citizens and communities it serves, and whereas local elected officials are in the best position to determine the scope and nature of education in their school districts. Whereas Ohio Senate Bill One strips the Ohio State Board of Education of significant educational responsibilities and deprives students and families of a public education system that is accountable to local representatives, and whereas Senate Bill One dramatically shifts oversight of public education from the State Board of Education to the political and partisan executive branch of Ohio's government, and whereas the board believes that any bill that so dramatically reshapes the public education system in Ohio should be thoroughly researched, discussed, and debated by education stakeholders, voters, and taxpayers. Whereas the board is unaware of any efforts that lawmakers have made to get input from local boards of education about this important legislation, now therefore being resolved. The Board of Education opposes Senate Bill One and urges lawmakers to vote against this legislation. While the Board of Education agrees that there could be much improvement to the Ohio Department of Education, the General Assembly should take more time for input, dialogue, and conversation before proceeding with such dramatic changes to the public education system in Ohio. I present this on behalf of the entire Cincinnati Board of Education and ask for your approval.
Thank you, Member Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any discussion or questions on this agenda? Mr. Morosky?
Just that that was a very polite way to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I would like to suggest, hopefully, a friendly amendment and strike the word "political," where it says "political," partisan, largely because the state school board is also political, but it's not necessarily the partisan piece. And I just, I think it might have a little bit of a better bite. Plus, we don't look like we're out of touch with reality on that one. But appreciate the resolution, very supportive of it regardless of how it reads, but I just think that might be a good change.
As a point of clarity, Member Bolton, I have a political appearing twice, once in the first paragraph and once in the fifth paragraph. Are you asking the motion maker to strike it in both?
My preference is the striking it the second time it's referenced.
So that's, got it.
Yeah.
And, Member Jones, is that a friendly amendment?
That's fine.
Okay, so the motion now is exactly the same, except for in the fifth paragraph. It used to read, whereas Senate Bill One dramatically shifts oversight of public education from the State Board of Education to the political and partisan executive branch. It now reads, from the State Board of Education to the partisan executive branch. Any other discussion on the amendment or the resolution? Member Jones?
Yes, actually, I attended an OSBA meeting on Saturday and was informed that this item will become out of committee tomorrow. So when it is approved, we have to get it either tonight or first thing in the morning to their office.
They're just waiting for us, Carol.
They're waiting for us, right.
Hopefully, we have wonderful people covering this board meeting tonight who can help get that in newspapers and on the radio, across the internets.
Oh, yes, they're all here.
Wonderful. Any other discussion on the resolution before we vote? Treasurer Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, we have a second resolution of a different magnitude from Mr. Morosky.
Thank you all very much. No, I'm just kidding. I have a resolution, a resolution, a request to waiver for alcohol use at the School for Creative and Performing Arts by the Cincinnati Chamber Orchestra. I present the resolution as written.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Any discussion or questions on the second resolution? Mr. Morosky?
As always, just for people that don't know, when folks use our facilities, we often will grant them a resolution. They come before Policy Committee and present it to us, and then we bring it to the full board. This is for wine-only at the SCPA. The Chamber Orchestra has used that facility for many, many years. We're happy to welcome them, and we certainly. We're happy to welcome them, and we certainly support them and hope everyone has a great time.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any other questions or discussion on the resolution? Ms. Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So before we move to the next section of the agenda, I'd like to see if we could do one more resolution. Before we can do that, our bylaws say that if we're going to make a change to an agenda, we need to waive our own requirement that we do that 48 hours in advance. I'd say we do this three or four times a year in my experience so far, but could I have a motion to waive our 48-hour agenda requirement so that we can add this item?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So I have a copy in front of me here, and we'll read it in a second, of a nomination of two new board members to the Preschool Promise Board of Managers. Treasurer Wagner, do you have a copy?
I do.
You have a copy, great. Could we just start with Mr. Morosky, and then each person read a paragraph quickly, or at whatever rate you would like to read it?
Sure. I'll start with the resolution nominating Ross Meyer and Pamela Bowers to the Preschool Promise Board of Managers.
Whereas the Board of Education shall nominate five members of the Preschool Promise Board of Managers and...
Whereas Pamela Bowers is the Director of School-Based Mental Health Services for the Central Clinic, where she provides outpatient mental health therapy and early intervention substance abuse counseling. Ms. Bowers was appointed to the Board of Education in 2019 and later won reelection for a two-year term. She served on the Policy and Equity Committee, Health and Safety Committee, and Strategic Engagement and Planning Committee. Ms. Bowers is a parent of two CPS graduates and...
Whereas Ross Meyer is the Vice President of Strategy for Interact for Health, an organization committed to improving health equity in greater Cincinnati. Mr. Meyer previously served at the United Way of Greater Cincinnati during COVID-19. Mr. Meyer led the Connect Our Students initiative to provide free home broadband to CPS students.
Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Cincinnati Board of Education recommends and nominates Pamela Bowers and Ross Meyer to serve as representatives to the Cincinnati Preschool Promise Board of Managers.
Wonderful. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on the resolution? Treasurer, Ms. Bolton.
Yes, the two great nominees and one vacancy we're aware of, and one is also in the near future as well, and it's important to appoint these two folks to prepare for the future.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any other discussion? Treasurer Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, moving right on to item J. This is the Superintendent of Schools section. Do we have any retirements this evening?
We do. We have six names that I will call. The very first name will be Cheryl K. Keller, a teacher at Virtual High School. That is our certificated staff. The next, we have civil service. There's Bonnie Rudessel. Hopefully, I'm saying these names correctly. I apologize if I am not. A licensed practical nurse, from Racy Price. Susan Rummen, an Assistant School Community Coordinator in early childhood. Gloria Sattler, Custodian in Facilities. Sylvester Turner, Custodian in Facilities. And Alithia White, a Manager in Student Dining Services. So we would just like to thank all of these individuals for their years of service to not only this district, but also to our students and the families. So thank you and congratulations to them.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Is there a motion to adopt the recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Bolton. Any discussion or questions on the superintendent's recommendation? Ms. Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Wonderful. So we're now in part two of our agenda this evening. We had four board matters come in. Thank you, everyone, for sharing them and sharing the information with them. We're going to hear first from Board Member Jones around a draft work plan for the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole.
Yes, thank you. I have developed, in conjunction with the superintendent, a draft version of the calendar year work plan for 2022 for Student Achievement Committee of the Whole, just to share with our public. The Board, in working with the Council of Gray City Schools, we began to talk about very broad-scope conversations around what the Board's role is in terms of impacting student outcomes. And as part of that discussion, we began to talk a little bit about how our committees were functioning around areas that we have developed in our bylaws that affect student achievement. And we had conversation and then made decision to bring those together in formulation of the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole, which allows all board members to be a part of the conversation around our student outcome goals. And as you all know, we've also been working with the Council of Gray City Schools on our goals and guardrails, which is sort of the highest priority of our student outcomes. The superintendent is being held accountable for the implementation of that, and we feel very strongly that the work around student achievement outcomes, as it's indicated in here, also feeds into the goals and the guardrails and ultimately the strategic plan. So this is a first, this is our first shot, our first year at doing our COW meeting in this way. We have had our COW meetings before, which is the full, which is the full Board as Committee of the Whole. And what makes this one different is that this one really is the superintendent's meeting to facilitate around what we've established as our priorities. And those priorities are first and foremost, the goals and guardrails, and then the priority around outcomes that we believe are important for our community to hear on a regular basis. These are things that we talked about, for example, like the Walnut Hills test, the curriculum, world languages. All of those are important topics that we want to make sure we keep to the forefront of our discussions. So I won't go into detail. You can, board members receive this, and I'm, we're open to the superintendent and I, hopefully, it is open to questions or comments about it. It is a draft, and there's a second part to it. Hopefully, it was kind of sent in two pieces, but there's a second part which has all the additions on it, where Board was asked to give input into specific topics. So we worked together to try to make sure that there was no duplication, that everything went in its proper place, and a calendar of when these topics could be expected to be presented. So I'll leave it as is and open it up for any conversation or questions about the plan.
Member Jones, one point of clarification, and if you just said this and I missed it, I apologize. For tonight, is the hope that we can just collect feedback for approval at a future meeting, or is it, is the hope tonight, collect feedback and vote to approve what was shared ahead of time?
It is, it is a draft for feedback and discussion, and I will finalize it and present it in our next meeting.
Great, great. Thank you. People have feedback or questions about the draft Student Achievement Committee of the Whole plan? Ms. Bolton?
And I feel like us, until we change our protocol, I would like, and it makes it a long, a long title, but I do like the actual title of the Student Achievement Committee as it pertained to, I think, district performance or something, that longer name of the committee that appears in our protocol. If you'll look and see what...
Student Achievement Performance Indicators, is it? Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, it's something about district performance, because I honestly feel that that more broadly and correctly defines certainly where this superintendent is taking us, and I think it makes, I think it makes sense if we can do that.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I think it will also help us win the competition for the longest committee title in CPS history. But I think that makes a lot of sense. Any other discussion, either Ms. Bolton or other board members, or feedback? Or, thank you very much, Member Jones and Superintendent for putting this together. I think this has come a long way. I'm so delighted that we're having conversations about student outcomes and district performance at an all-board level every month, that it's aligned to the goals and guardrails. Thank you. Any other questions or feedback? Okay, moving right along, we will go to Board Matters, item two on athletics, from Mrs. Weinberg.
Yes, so President Lindy, I'm actually going to ask if we can move my two topics actually to inquiries and updates. I think that those would probably apply there, though in terms of the athletic transportation update, I had a couple of questions, inquiries regarding that topic, and then I had an inquiry regarding health and safety of students and families, so I will wait to add those into the next.
We will come back to them in just a moment. Our last one, then, is from Member Bolton on Board and Community Agreements.
Again, I'll do this briefly, and it's, I've mentioned it a few times, we have a number of agreements coming up that are, I think, somewhat time-sensitive. One is our agreement with the, it's insane, preschool promise, as well as the Board adopting kind of officially our existing and current MOU with our SROs. We also have an agreement that's critically important regarding Metro. I think it's an annual one. And then also, it's my understanding, and perhaps this is not right, but I think there's some MOUs that might also pertain to our school-based health centers. I'm not sure about that, but I, it's, if the superintendent can look into that, and I do think it'd be great to get those done. And then longer-term down the road, of course, is the community investment groups, but that's, that's further down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Now, on to inquiries and updates. Back to you, Mrs. Weinberg.
All righty. Superintendent Wright, this topic is for you in terms of athletic transportation. I know that the Board, and we have also discussed this in previous board meeting regarding an update, we're entering into the spring season for sports, and I know transportation is our favorite topic, but in terms of for the junior high and for high school, can we be provided with an update in terms of how we are going to plan to transport our student athletes to their competitions or what might be in place? And then in terms of as we're thinking about it for next year as well?
So it's difficult, obviously, for me to answer the question for next year because we're looking to do an overall revamp, hopefully, with transportation for next year. We don't have a change with transportation for yellow buses for this school year, as I've shared in each of the meetings. We're, you know, we don't have additional drivers, and so there is not a way for us to address that particular need. However, we have recently reviewed with our transportation team and our liability team a review for the possibility of leasing vans for this semester. I don't know how that will necessarily address the seventh and eighth-grade population that we might be asking about, but hopefully, looking at how we are able to use that in terms of athletics across the board. So it just really came to me on Friday for us to do additional reviews. I'm not in a position where I could speak further about it right now, because I do have a few more questions for the team, like making sure that we can actually lease the vans, even if it's approved for us to do so. So that's where we are in terms of that. We do think that by the end of the week, though, we should have an answer around that part. And when I say "if we can," I mean in terms of the inventory for the van company to have it available for us, and then, you know, we would be looking at coaches actually doing the driving, with parent permission for them to ride with the, with the coaches.
Thank you for that update. I know that was something that the Board had also discussed about leasing vans or getting vans as possible transportation. So I know that it's not something that is definite, but thank you for sharing that it's something that you all are working on. I do appreciate that. All right, my last question would be regarding health and safety of our students. So I know, Board members, and I'm going to speak for myself, we've gotten, I guess I would say, an increase of emails regarding students' mental health and students regarding bullying and also intimidation within family members while they're at schools or different school property. My question, or what I would like to inquire, in terms of the bully button, I know some parents are stating in their emails that they are not aware of the bully button. Is there, is it possible, can we pull it up on the screen just to kind of direct and show people again how to get to that? And then I would like to possibly a little bit later, make an assignment in regards to getting that data, to see how many of our students are actually, and the families are actually pressing that button, and to seeing what is resulting from the reporting of the bullying as well.
Okay, so the team is actually pulling that information up right now to put it on the screen so that it's there. And then we'll share it. Thank you. And I did hear the request for possibly making a request for those students or the fam, the students that are actually pressing the bully button. Yes. So if you notice, when you go to our screen, this is our web, this is our webpage, the very first button on the webpage to the left is the "Report Bullying." So once you click, if, Rob, if you'll move away from it so you see what it looks like. Okay, then if you'll scroll back over. So once you click "Report Bullying" on the very first page of the webpage, click there, please. Then it takes you to the specific information for how you're to put the information in, who, who is making the referral, or who is selecting the bully button. I mean, it is optional, it can go in as anonymous, and so once the information goes in, it then goes to the team. The team does the follow-up with that. It goes through our social work team, actually. They do the follow-up by getting involved, doing the review of the information that's there to determine whether or not it is, whether or not it is founded or not, whether it's founded or unfounded. And then at that point, if it's founded and it requires discipline, it goes back to the school for the school to actually do the discipline on, on the issue. So here is just where, so bully information can come in a couple of different ways. This is the one that is on the website, but bullying can also be reported directly at the school site as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to make it aware, I know parents have stated that they did not know how to get to the actual website page or the link, and so I think it was just nice to be able to share that information as well with the public.
Thank you, Member Weinberg. Thank you, Superintendent. Are there other inquiries or updates from board members? Okay, hearing none. We're on assignments. I know that...
I think we have one, Dan.
Sorry, I'm on bed.
That's okay. Mr. Morosky, go ahead.
Yes, the inquiry, it was born out of, thank you, President Lindy, a combination of Member Craig and Member Bolton. So Member Craig was talking about the sign language, and Member Bolton was talking about the contracts, and it occurs to me, and I extraordinarily remiss in just now realizing this, but thank both of you, that since we've been back in person with people here, we haven't had our signers. And I know that we had signers at all our meetings for years that would sit up here and sign our meetings for folks who are hearing impaired, and they haven't come back. And I was just wondering if we could, the way I understood it, I mean, they were like students, they were studying, and I don't, I don't want to assume anything. I think they had to do, it was like part of their program. I don't know if it was gratis, we paid them, but could we look into that and see if we could get our signers back for our hearing impaired friends? Thank you.
Mr. Morosky, that was offered as an inquiry?
Yeah, sorry. It was, I guess the inquiry was like, what happened? I don't know, I just don't know if anyone brought it up, so maybe it is an assignment.
It's a great question. No, I don't know either.
Sorry, maybe it is an assignment, just to look into it. I'm not saying go do it right now, but maybe look into like why they didn't come back. I know, I know we can have, you know, people watching at home can see it, but people here can't, so. can't, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other inquiries or updates? Or Superintendent, you can respond.
Actually, just to the, I will, I need to do research on the signers because we haven't had any since I've been, I've been here. So we'll find out where they are and get them back in the meeting, especially since we have an increase in participants. I think the question that I have, and it's probably been a few months ago, a Board Member Jones brought up the question about having the Board meetings at another location, at a school location. So if we are still looking to do that, my question is, do we want to do that in March? Do we want to do that in April? Do we want to have the rest of our Board meetings there? Just a little, we've already identified the sites, but in order for us to be able to make sure that they're announced publicly and give enough time for notice, I wonder, do we, is that something that we want to do for an extended period of time, like the rest of the year, or would it just be for a month or so?
It's a great question. Can I invite some of the folks who've been around before me? Because I joined about a month before COVID. What was our past practice?
Okay, I think it would be fine. It, you know, May is right around the corner, even if we do one in the community. If we can do two and it's practical and feasible to do it, that would be fine, but for the calendar, for the school year, we usually try to do one per quarter.
Okay, so moving forward, we'll make sure that we have the location for one per quarter, but we can, if we, if the Board believes that it gives enough time for notice, we can definitely plan for April and May, or April or May is completely up to the Board.
Yeah, I'm hearing a lot of April and May.
Okay, all right, so we'll work on it.
Any dissent? Just because I was hearing it from that side of the room doesn't mean it's also true on this side of the room. Everybody's okay with April and May? All right, excellent. Assignments. I'd like to just clarify the one that Member Weinberg was offering a moment ago. Superintendent, can you just share like what type of data on the bully button you're imagining? And I want to make sure it's responsive and that if either we're all a consensus or we can vote on it, but can you just say a little bit about what you were thinking?
Sure, so the, I believe the data might be the calls that have gone into the bully button, any, and I say calls, the number of inquiries or information that's been put in on the bully button, and then what the adjudication for those has been. Is that right? Okay, that is correct.
So then, assignment is offered, any, it's fine with me, any dissent, though? It's got to be with a majority of board members or a consensus. Seeing no dissent, great. Any other assignments? Okay, wonderful. Any announcements or kudos? Mr. Craig?
So I have one announcement and somewhat of a kudo also. For a little while back, we had, the Cincinnati Ethics Center came in and dropped us off some lovely presents about the Cincinnati Ethics Bowl, of which our own Waller Hills High School was the winner of the regional. They went on to face in the divisional round one of the top 10 schools in the country in Ethics Bowl. So, you know, it's how we get rewarded for winning in our first ever regional. And so while they put up a valiant effort, they were not victorious, but I thought it was good to still note that the first champions of the Cincinnati Regional Ethics Competition, Ethics Bowl competition, our own Waller Hills High School, went on and did a very good effort at the, with the divisional round. And so it's something that I would hope each of our schools participates in, each of our high schools should say participates in in the future, because it is something that so much great discussion was had in the competition and then also in the future years that folks sooner in the community who would want to be judges in the Ethics Bowl competitions as they go forward, get a chance to participate and see how great, so many students are talking about really, really deep issues and really important issues. I mean, everything around foreign topics, foreign policy, even just dealing with environmental ideas, all kinds of stuff. So it was a really great showing when they did the regional, and unfortunately, we got matched up with, you know, the private elementary school that I did find out was a $37,000 a year tuition school, so. Ethics gets a little bit more funding there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Craig, and congratulations to all of our students. Member Jones?
Yes, I want to give a kudo to, is this kudo? Okay, I thought we still had announcements. Actually, Mr. Black is in the audience, but I wanted to congratulate the students who were selected to be in the honor band that participated this past weekend at Xavier. I would have loved to have gone but couldn't get there as a former band member. But anyway, congratulations to those students for representing CPS, and I know they were good. Thank you.
Any other announcements or kudos? Having no other business before us, I declare our meeting adjourned. Have a great evening.